All right, we're probably leading to order. Ed, would you be so kind as to make the plug in?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, and to the Constitution, the Constitution of individual and liberty of justice for all.
Do I have a whole call, please?
Douglas Beating, Kathy Buckley.
Here.
Michael Hagedorn, Ed Marin.
Here.
Christopher Micho, Crystal Palmer.
Here.
Nicole Bootborn.
Here.
Mark Sand.
Holly Stone.
Here.
What were your orders? Since when are you going to go forward with the agenda?
Right, you're going to do, we're going to do this plan.
Right, well, so.
No, there's no need.
Yeah, so we opened the meeting so strictly because we have a form on the board here. The purpose of the meeting at 5:45 was a legal requirement to adopt our changes to our district safety plan. It's a hearing, so if anybody in the audience has questions, we can answer them as much as we're not going to give away any details about how we affect our security here at Beaverton. And then, so we stay open for half an hour, and at 6:15 we can commence with the full board business.
Okay. Does anyone at this time have any questions concerning our security safety plan?
District safety plan.
District safety plan.
Are there any questions, or are they going to make a comment, or just general safety concerns?
Absolutely. Is this about the safety plan?
Just general safety planning about the school in general, and just about the other, as a parent.
Okay, okay, because this is the safety plan hearing, so stick to the safety plan part.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I veer off that topic, can you just tell me?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Perfect. So just from a parent perspective, a couple of my concerns are, we have the fortune and the mis- yeah.
Sorry, could you say your name?
Sorry, I'm Shasta Whitford, and I have two students at BES. So we have the fortune and the misfortune of being a big building here, and I think it's great that my children will go to BES and then just stay here all through high school, which is wonderful, but it's also a concern as a parent that we do have a big open building. And so I think that we, as a district, need to be thinking about what could we do better so that if there was a problem in the elementary, it doesn't also impact the high school? Or if there's a problem in the high school, how can we keep the elementary students safe? So back and forth, and I know that we cannot plan for every possible scenario, there's absolutely no way, but it is imperative that we think about those things and try to brainstorm. And I know that SADA has requirements, and there's all kinds of stuff, but I think that there are probably some creative ways to do that, and maybe we can start thinking outside of the box about how to do that. And then just one other question or comment about it is for lockdowns, and I know where I work, teachers are allowed to call lockdowns, and I'm not sure if in this district if that's allowed. And so if there's a concern somewhere in the building, how do they, and I know that you're not going to divulge your safety plan, and that's fine, but how do staff let somebody know there's an emergency, and how quickly can the system be activated to keep students and staff safe?
Those are great, great concepts, or great ideas to think about. I know what you're talking about, about the division in the, from the elementary and the high school, and that is something that is talked about on a regular basis.
Okay.
So is that close to you?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So much as it began recently with the school year, so month and months, we had our architect here because of the capital projects, and we reviewed how, how could we potentially make, move the doors over by the, or the, you know, the main doors where people walk into the high school. If you take a left, you're, you go by high school and the middle school gym, which draws us right there into the elementary, right? You talk about how can we move doors, or what can we do? And the regs are really, they make a lot of sense, but they preclude some of those creative ideas, just like how, it's all about length of the, width of the hallway, distance from the turn, and what doors can be locked, and which doors can't be locked. So that was, that was enlightening. There are doors we could put in, BES would do space in that situation, which is, you know, then you have, you gotta weigh, the bill, the board would have to weigh, and the public would have to weigh, the desire for more doors, which is perceived as keeping us safer, maybe, I don't think they would, I don't know, versus the educational program, which is, which is tough. And then, the, you know, we talked at the last safety committee meeting about, you know, how much do, you know, we've put in well over a million dollars in safety upgrades since I've been here, and at what point do we say, you know, do we keep going? It's such a hard, I don't have an answer for you, it's just more rhetorical or theoretical. What point do you say, have we gone too far? And I said, I don't regret any of our, any of our moves, but I mean, there's a lot of taxpayer dollars invested already into the safety. We have a line item for safety, and we talked about doing one of our next cap outlays, one of our two or three next cap outlay projects, it was a small hundred thousand dollar project for maybe something like the doors to keep, to put, to put as a barrier at BES.
I think in an ideal world, you know, we have doors that react to the fire alarm system, and they close when there's a fire alarm. It'd be nice if we could have some sort of a system hooked up to our lockdown area, and I know there are concerns about blocking any aggress, and I get that, but most of BES is the first floor, there are lots of windows, so if you really had to get out, you could go out the first floor of windows.
So, well, it's a good, so we do have doors that do shut, so doors in the hallways that shut, right? But one of the investments we made is last year and this year, doors that will automatically lock on push of a button, and, and lock everybody into the room, which we know is the best practice, because there's never been, there's never been an intruder in a school shooter situation that has penetrated a locker room. So we know if the doors get locked, kids are safe.
So that's something you're looking into, or you've done?
No, we, so we, we, we taxpayers, we put it in our last two budgets, and we went out to bid for the, for, come on, that was in the first package, we had to go a hundred thousand dollars that time. Come on, head to the first package, that's been done, that's been bid on, that's been awarded, they might be coming in gen, probably inside here right now, we can actually talk about it. We can talk about it at a board meeting, there are open, I'll bring up during presentations when that cap outlay is implemented, it's one of the vacations, because they're taking off doors, bringing out doors, all that good stuff. And then BES was awarded this year in the budget, so they're just going to go out for bid, and, you know, the hope is the same company, it doesn't matter us which company works a bid, it's the same door, or same technology on the, like, say they have a really good door already, this is the new technology on the handle, so it's wifi, it's a wifi, and the principal would be able to just lock it down.
And then no offices can get crazy busy, what if the principal's not available? Like, will there be a backup plan and all, more people that could do it?
Yeah, right, and the same thing is true with a lockdown. We purchased an amazing amount of upgrades for safety, putting a lot of different cameras, but one of the upgrades we have in each office, which is not under lock and key for principals, but you certainly can't, there's a number of reasons why I'll tell you, you can't have just anybody to make the call, they have what we call panic buttons, and Matt, do you want to just, Matt, do you want to just talk about your panic buttons?
Yes, panic buttons are in all the building administrators' offices, and basically what happens is we push that button, it puts the mic down, and automatically we'll, you know, in the process, we'll, we'll give 91, call please, give them here, and lock down our doors, and it's actually a great tool that we have put in place to help with lockdowns. And those are, those are such cool, like I said, in our office, we also have them for evacuation seals as well, so it's not just lockdowns, evacuation, two separate buttons. So it's a, it's a great tool for us to lock down quickly and have a good test.
Great. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else at this time have any questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, the thing that's, just to update you on the plan, it's not in the plan, and the district-wide safety plan is kind of a generic idea of our safety. The school-wide plans, you get into the real details of how the school keeps everybody safe, but one of the trainings I just went to, number of staff members, there are only two superintendents I think were there, we talked about how we can have free training on stop-the-bleed kits, and we know that at the last school shooting in California, kids' lives were saved because they had those stop-the-bleeds. So we've identified a free trainer for anybody that probably do it in the summertime, anybody that wants to receive the training can go have the training, and we're going to purchase 10 to 20 of those kits to start out and have, you know, we have 20 of a five in each school, and it's just another great tool to have in case, you know, your stop-to-bleed can have, you know, it doesn't have to be a shooter, you know, it can have tragic events. So that's, that'll be a change in our, in our plan, and that's what we look for, we look for best practices in all the schools. We listen to Jeff Sisson and others, and the state police have been great, great partners, but that'll be an upgrade we have this year. Yeah, and just a little note that's on the plan is we have, we've purchased go buckets, well, stay buckets are go buckets, so if you're in lockdown, teachers have, in lockdown, things that they can use to help keep their kids quiet, reduce anxiety, I think lollipops are in there. The buckets can be used in multiple ways in case they're in there for a very long time, and that's the issue when you go into lockdown, is you're in a lockdown, that means principals are in the lockdown, and you have to wait until you're cleared, which can be, and cleared and reunified with parents, which is very traumatic, and there's been some lockdowns that have been called around here and in other places that are very traumatic, because everybody believes they are in lockdown. And I'll go, I'll just take a flashback for a second, I'll get back on the topic of the buckets. We had an active shooter drill here, it was an active shooter drill here. We trained for the drill, everybody knew that they were participating in the drill, if you didn't want to participate in the drill, you didn't have to participate in the drill. Those people who knew it was drill day, there's no kids in the building, we divided you up into groups with other teachers, I can't tell you how many people were crying and traumatized by part, adults, by participating in that drill. And I remember the drill vividly, and I remember like, okay, we're ready for the drill, and then you hear the gunfire, and everything changes, and it was, it was great training, we're actually going to do it next year.
Excellent.
But, now think of when you go into lockdown, and everybody thinks it's the real deal. That's, that's, every week, so we, this is the balance, and this is, there is no answer, I can't, I can't tell you that we're smart, we figured it out. On average, the last data, data points that I read was on average in the years, in the United States, we lose 10 students to school shootings, which is just unbelievable to think about, right?
Do you remember what the statistic was like, a week, a month, a year?
Year, sorry, annual, 10, 10 students annually to a school shooting, but so many of these, we do all these drills, and I'm glad we do these drills, but there are actually, there's a ton of articles now saying that these drills are dramatically impacting our kids, this kids with anxiety, and those kids, and those kids supposed to feel when they come here, your daughters, my kids, everybody's your kids, they're supposed to feel that this is a safe place, right? And, so how do we do that? How do we train for this but also make them feel it's a safe place? It's one of those things we're wrestling with, we talked about it at safety committee, we don't have an answer, but I, every week I read articles about that, and it's just this, I wish we had better answers for that. But anyways, the buckets are really good, because one day we had an inadvertent fire alarm go off, and our kids had to go outside, and we were evacuating, and it was like two degrees, and the wind was howling, and, so we had to have the kids go to their spots where they're supposed to go with the teachers, and it was freezing, so we actually purchased, I forgot who sourced them, maybe it was Mary Blaine sourced them, we sourced those thermal moon blankets.
They're like a metal silver thermal blankets.
Yeah, so we have those on buses, because a bus can get really cold really fast, and we have them in classrooms, so if you don't have your coat when you go outside, they're in the bucket, so it's there for the kids when they can't. We also said elementary kids, if you're in your room, take the two seconds to grab the coat. Now, if you're middle school kid, don't go to your locker when we're evacuating, but so it's worth, it's worth the, unless you could smell smoke or something, it's worth the risk to grab your coat. So, so on going, we have a great safety committee, we've got a great board, we're going to continue to work on best practices. That idea of the, of the elementary school, there's been a lot of investigation into that, we'll just have to make a decision, I think once we have the doors done, we'll have to make a decision, do we want more doors, and what's the impact of more doors?
And how technology changes that may impact it also?
Sure.
As time goes on.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that has any questions or comments concerning our safety plan? Is there anyone else at this time that has any questions or comments concerning our safety, district-wide safety plan? All right, seeing that we have no questions, if by chance you have just walked in and haven't signed in, could you please be kind enough to come over? I'll show you where. Can you sign in?
I'm sorry, did you, I guess.
You won't forget.
Wasn't he there?
I know.
It's at the beginning? You start on page seven.
No, no.
Six and seven.
How are you tonight? Not bad.
About the score in the major?
Not good.
Seeing that we have so many people in here, if anyone is, has any questions or comments concerning the district-wide safety plan, please feel free to approach at this time. All right, we have to wait until 6:15 to start the meeting again?
6:15.
Oh, is that?
That clocks.
Is that clock wrong?
Yes.
Because that one, that one says it's 6:00. All right. All right.
It is a post-it note.
All right, is there, is this a, I have to close the public hearing, or do I just say public hearing and we're going to have a screen? All right, the public hearing is now closed. So everyone knows we're going to rearrange the agenda a little bit tonight, we're going to do actual presentations before we do public comment. So starting with our first resolution, may it be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Holly, a second.
Second.
Mark Sand. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No? Abstains? Resolution passes. Onto presentations, our first presentation is a retirement plaque. And I am very proud to present this retirement plaque of 28 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the students and our school. our school community, to the young people of the county. Our next topic is special New York State School Boards Association Champion of Change for Kids banner, which will be presented by Dr. Wing Rogers.
If you said doctor, I think you better...
Oh, oh.
I'm not the...
Oh, director, sorry.
Director. Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm very glad to be here. You know, I have, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, my mother always said, things occur in threes. My folks moved to the district after I was out of high school, but I still lived with them, and so I recall at least two different budget votes that I did attend. And this was quite a while ago, probably before many of you were voting. My wife did her student teaching year. She was majoring in chem and did her teaching at the high school. And my youngest brother graduated from Beadman Town. So I always had a connection to Beadman Town. You know, when I go to various school districts, a lot of times, it's really just saying, well, I drove past that building before. But let me tell you, when you drive past this building and you look for a parking lot, I always am saying, well, I know how big it is, but I don't know how many things are happening here tonight. But I do know one thing, that one thing that really did happen here, and that's why I'm here tonight, is the reason for us awarding the Champions for Kids banner. Your work on suicide prevention is not overlooked. And I've got to add this, that we scrutinize very closely what is being done for kids across the state. And in so doing, we have a really good group of people who will come up first with a pile of suggestions, and it's narrowed down greatly. This is the second one that's being given in this area of six, which is in Essex, Franklin, Hamilton, St. Lawrence County. So it really is something. But, you know, without taking any more of your time, I just want to say that, you know, very proud to see what you have done, and I'm not sure who
Do you need some help with it?
...the recipient should be, whether you have people here, or Kathy, whether I can just...
Happy to take it on behalf of the district. Thank you.
Okay. If there are any groups that should be in it?
Sure.
Can we take the picture before I leave?
Sure. So this was driven, well, this was initiated at the board level. This plan was initiated at the board level. But the heavy lifting is always done by others, right?
Right.
And members of this administrative team have actually, some of them weren't here when it started, but they've actually grown the plan and continues to be a work in progress. So why don't we have the administrative team, while I'm here, if I want.
Hang on, may I tighten up a little bit? Sorry, I'm sorry you're reading here. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work you've obviously done and are continuing to do. I know this is ongoing, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I want to thank all the board members, too. It's, you know, this is a new program, and I'd rather please.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next topic is presenter Michael Boers of Boers and Wood CPA's PC. It's our audio recorder.
Thank you, Kathy. My name is Michael Boers. I'm the independent auditor for the district, and we're hired to come in once a year and audit the books and records of the school district, and that runs from July 1st through June 30th. So we came in end of July, did the audit. Just want to mention the business office does a great job, and they, when we're here, the information is ready and available. We're in and out in a week, so it's a great job on their part. So I'm here to present the financial statements to the board and answer any questions they have. When we, when we assist the preparation of these financial statements, we have to do an opinion on them, whether we think they're fairly stated. So we do that opinion, and it's called an unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion we can give. So that's what's in these financial statements. If I had to pick a page in these statements that I thought was important for the board to be familiar with, I would say pages 57 to 58. Those two pages have a lot of information on them. It presents the results of the operations from last year, revenues, expenses. It compares those revenues and expenses to the budget. And it also gives you the fund balance at the end of the year and the bottom of the P-58. So that's, that's an important data thing for everybody to be aware of. I'm also in the process of putting some ratios together and some statistics that, I do 13 school districts during the course of the summer for audits. And at the end of the year, I put a spreadsheet together with all the districts, and it shows some key ratios and some statistics for your district that's compared to everybody else. So in a couple of weeks, that'll be coming. I'll send that to Jen. Maybe Jen can forward it on. Does that board have any questions?
Gatsby 75, right? That's the change from 45 to 75, the last couple of years?
Yes, correct.
How is that affected by the recent changes in the insurance we had with our consortium?
As far as the change in premiums or the change in...
How it affects our liabilities going forward.
I think you're talking about the change in premiums, which drive up the cost, which could then drive up our liability.
Right. That's correct.
Right. So I guess trying to feel for the long term, does that affect the Gatsby 75 specifically or anywhere else?
The Gatsby 75 is done by actuaries, and they factor in what they think the cost of health insurance is over in the future.
Sure.
And that gets factored into that total liability number.
So that's, that's kind of what I'm worried about, because we had a year where it jumped up twice in the course of one year by double digits percentage-wise, right?
That will definitely impact this calculate, probably next year, the next time we have an actual evaluation.
Okay.
I think it might be next year.
Because, you know, this kind of talks about the health of our, of our district, but if our insurance keeps jumping, 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 I'm worried about how that's going to affect our long-term liabilities on this document.
You won't be all. That's for sure.
Right.
Any other additional questions?
Okay. Thank you, thanks, everybody.
Our next presenters are, the topic is special education. Our presenters are Polly Tavernin, the Assistant Superintendent of Special Services, and Nick Pepe, Director of Pupil Personnel and Services.
Evening. We're just going to give you a brief overview of the special education process and talk about the current data and goals in the Special Services Department. Just to start with a very brief overview of special education and the definition of your state, and essentially, we're looking at specially-designed instruction for students, and that means where you're adapting content, methodology, delivery of instruction in the least restrictive environment, that mental section, which we'll talk about a little bit more, in order to provide students access to the curriculum. This is essentially the whole special education process. We're not going to talk about all of that, it's a lot, but it just kind of gives you a nice visual of all the things that the foundation with the federal and state laws, the state performance plan, all the way through discipline, which has its own set of regulations regarding students with disabilities. We're going to kind of focus on that second and third column with CSE process and that least restrictive environment. So this, the timeline, essentially, when a student, we start with a referral. So we get a referral from a parent, or possibly from the district. So each building has an instructional support team, and they monitor students' progress with the district's RTI plan. So students that are receiving interventions, and perhaps they've had multiple interventions and multiple data points, there may come to a point where they decide to refer a student to the Committee on Special Education for an evaluation. So once we receive a referral, we send out a packet to parents that includes their procedural safeguards, which is their rights as a parent, and a consent to evaluate, which includes the testing that would be done for their student. When we receive that consent, that signed consent back, that's when our timeline starts. So you'll see on there, we have 60 days from the time we receive that consent to complete an evaluation and determine eligibility and develop an IEP if a student is eligible in a visualized education plan. So once we have that signed consent, we start an evaluation. Our school psychologist contacts the parent, that's the first step, and we get information in social history, medical history, areas of concern that the parent may have. They speak with teachers and other people involved with the student. They also observe the student in a learning environment, and that kind of drives, they get all those concerns, because that kind of drives what assessments they may do to complete the evaluation. We are always looking at like a cognitive profile and academic achievement testing, but depending on the concerns, there might be reading skills for attention or behavior, there may be executive functioning assessments completed. If there are speech or communication concerns, then we would do a speech evaluation. If there's motor concerns, we would have occupational therapists and/or physical therapists do an evaluation. And all of that information is compiled into the report, and they contact the parent ahead of time, send the report home, and review it by phone or through meeting, because it's a lot of information. So we never want a parent hearing about all of that for the first time at a meeting. They want time to review it, ask questions, talk about possible recommendations. And then within that 60 days, we need to determine eligibility and develop an IEP if they're eligible, which we'll talk about a little bit more. Then, within a year from that initial meeting, if the student's eligible, we have an annual review meeting to review program and services for the following year. If at any time, there are concerns that the student might need more or less or changes to their IEP, then we can meet prior to an annual review. Evaluations, so I talked about those, essentially. In addition to initial evaluations, we also are required to complete reevaluations every three years of students. So in addition to those initial, our school psychologists also complete the reevaluation process. Then we'll talk a little bit about eligibility.
So one thing the school districts have to consider prior to determining if a child qualifies and be classified as a disabled with a disability is if they've had proper instruction, especially in the areas of reading and math. And that's where the district's response intervention or our RTI plan comes into play. So the basis, so overall, the process, part of the evaluation looks at a child's cognitive abilities and also their academic achievement. And RTI is designed to ensure that their academic achievement isn't due, any gaps not due to lack of proper instruction. Sometimes, if parents do call up for a referral, one conversation we have is if the child has received any intervention services. And sometimes that, that calls for a parent to withdraw a referral if they better have an RTI process going through.
Nick, can you just go quickly through what the intervention hierarchy, level one, level two, and level three are, just for academics, staying away from behaviors?
Sure. So level one is assured, your general education classroom, something that your general education classroom teachers can do. They're available to all students, so that not every student may get intervention. For example, and this goes for reading, math, and also, we're working out our RTI system for behaviors. It also goes for behavioral intervention. For example, some kids may need a picture schedule on their desk, and they don't have their levels. So a minor thing, but sometimes it really helps some students. So some simple classroom behavior plans that are available to all students. Now, tier two interventions, this typically can be a pullout, like reading or math, a pullout service, two or three times a week in groups of, you know, five or six students. And then tier three, tier three, and that's one of our most intensive interventions, that may entail daily reading services in groups of maybe one to three students. If a parent does not refer a child, the district can also, and the district will, if the child is not making adequate progress through their interventions at the tier three level, that we have also a basis to refer to in specification. But that's a broad overview of their entire plan. So the next step in the process is what's called an initial eligibility determination meeting. And at that meeting, that's where we decide if a child does or does not qualify or be classified as a child with a disability. So if we all agree, the answer is yes. The next step is we have to choose one of the 13 classification areas. So just a couple of little things about this slide. The school district doesn't diagnose disabilities, and we don't need diagnoses in order to classify a child, except however autism. For children who have autism, we do require an outside diagnosis for that one. The most common ones we'll see in the school district would be a learning disability. And the other one, it's somewhat broad, but other health impairment. That could be anything with ADHD, executive functioning deficits, all the way to a medically fragile child, something like, you know, lead poisoning, leukemia, or heart condition, diabetes, depending on what the child needs, or it's a broad one. But the point of this is just to, for someone just looking at an IEP at a quick glance, they would have a general understanding of what classification means, or in general of all students with that classification. So one thing to note, if we have the initial eligibility determination meeting and the child does not qualify for an IEP, we can recommend or refer the child to Section 504 Accommodation Plan Committee. So 504 and IEP, they're very similar, but they are also very different. They come from two separate laws. 504s, they're housed in the Office of Civil Rights, while IEPs are, come from law under IDA, 73 and 1975. They both, so this sort of gets a little bit murky. So everything you see, every, we talked about our classification rate, you see any test scores regarding students with disabilities, poverty levels, suspension rates regarding students with disabilities, all those are only for students with IEPs. However, students with 504 plans, they also have a disability, but for all school reporting purposes, the two are not the same. One large difference, and there's no real guidance from the state regarding how to distinguish between the two, but one of the best practices is that if a child requires the services of a special education teacher, that child receives an IEP. If the child doesn't, the child may only have a 504. And they both contain accommodations, modifications, testing combinations, things of that nature. They have similar, they look similar. They both have annual meetings, parents can always have additional meetings for either document, but the biggest wide guideline between the two is one has special education teaching services and one is not.
Nick, excuse me, do the laws ever conflict? Any circumstances where they ever conflict each other?
Not that I can think of, no. And it is possible for a student to go from an IEP to a 504. Sometimes if we declassify a child, they may go from an IEP to a 504, and a child can also go from a 504 to an IEP.
Because there's fewer specific regulations regarding Section 504... Because there's fewer specific regulations regarding Section 504, the guidance to us has always been to follow the CSE process because they've said that federal government, if you follow IDEA with 504, then you're meeting the requirements. So, which is why we kind of tweaked our 504 process a few years back. And now any student referred for a 504 goes to CSE first so that we can make sure that we're providing everything they're eligible for. So we first look at the other four, an IEP, and then if not, 504.
And we view any psychological evaluation will require review for both documents every three years. Now pause and talk about preschool.
So preschool eligibility is a little bit different than school age. So let's just to note that it's very much based on scores, whereas it's a little more subjective at the school age level. So for preschool, if a student has 33% delay or more in one functional area, or 25% delay or more in two or more areas, then they're eligible for services in those areas. So that might be the cognitive domain, it might be adaptive, social, emotional communication or motor development. So any of those areas, then we would develop an IEP for that preschool student. And preschool, if you're not getting a specific classification of one of those 13 classifications, they are classified as a preschool student with a disability. It's a much more general classification area for preschool. As far as special education programs and services, once a student is determined to be eligible, we look at what programs and services they need to assist them. And we're going to see special education as a service, not a place. We always want to remember that because we don't want people saying that student needs to go to special education. It's not a place. We always want to provide services and supports as much as possible in the general education setting. So, I'll skip ahead for a minute. We talk about least restrictive environment. This is something we're required to look at and make sure that each student receives services in the least restrictive environment, which means that they are in the general education setting with their non-disabled peers as much as possible. So when we look at, we don't want to remove a student from the general education setting unless it's absolutely necessary and not just because they might need modifications to a curriculum or they might need accommodations. We don't remove students just for those reasons. So when we, this is regulation, but also when we look at what's best for kids, there's a lot of research to support that students with disabilities have better communication, fewer behavior problems, better academic achievement. All of those things have been shown if they're included in the general education setting with better outcomes. So that's the reasoning behind why we're always looking at least restrictive environment. So when we look at programs and services, there's a continuum of programs and services for students with disabilities. We always want to start least restrictive. When you look at consultant teacher services, for example, that's in a general education setting. So a special education teacher may push in and work with students in a regular education classroom. Or indirect consultant teacher services is a special education teacher working with the general education teacher to help modify or provide supports for the student. We have integrated co-teaching services, which is also a general education setting. And that means that a student, there are students with disabilities and without in the classroom. And a special education teacher and general education teacher are working together to provide instruction for all of the students in the room. When we look at resource room services, that can be either in the classroom or pulled out. Often it is pulled out so it is time out of the general education setting if you're working with a group of, it's a maximum of five students with a special education teacher. Related services again can be push-in or pull-out services, so in the setting or in the therapy room. When we go onto a more restrictive environment, we're looking at special classes. So that would include 811 classrooms, 1211, which means 12 students to one teacher and one care professional. We also have 15-1, which is 15 special education students to one teacher. We have a 12-1-3-1 program. So that is a more restrictive setting. And it may not be for all of their day. Some students may receive special class just for one class. So for instance, a student at the high school level may need more support in math, so they may go to a 15-1 math class, but they stay in an integrated co-teaching class for their other subject areas. So we always want to look at that, each individual student and where they can stay in the general education setting. When they are in special class for instruction most of the day in the district, they still are with their non-disabled peers during special areas like music, recess, lunch, art, all of those areas. When you look at a more restrictive setting like CDES, students are in the special education setting all day with, without any interaction with non-disabled peers. So that's kind of the continuum of special education services.
So one service that can go on IEPs or one-to-one aid, we put the slide in here because it's not uncommon that we do get requests for a one-to-one aid for students. So just one thing to think about before assigning a one-to-one aid is there's certain negative aspects of that. So one thing we don't want to negatively impede a child's ability to gain independent skills. We also have to take social norms into consideration. That's often why you see one-to-one aid is more at the elementary level and the high school level because there are certain negative connotations having another adult with children throughout their school day. The one thing we specifically have to build into the IEP is what is a specific skill, age, and help the child gain so we can reduce the services of the need. It's often that it's a one-to-one aid throughout the day, but we can also look to reduce that as a way to wean off that support. Actually, Ms. Tavernier covered most of these. These are just what we have right now in our different levels of buildings. Nothing is set in stone. We're also trying to be a couple of years ahead in estimating what we may need if we need a service. If you add a service, we have to reduce a service or reduce a service. Always based upon the needs of the district, it's not just this is what we have. We always try to meet the needs of the students that we have. And just a clarification, we have a couple of 15-1 programs listed for the high school. The life skill, those are students who are generally going for their CDS, or developmental occupational studies if you have a kid. They often go off-campus to different job sites and work sites. And our 15-1 parallel curriculum, these are students who will be taking the various events. Any questions about this slide?
So we also have preschool services. As you know, we've added integrated classrooms. So we now have four integrated preschool classrooms, which are considered 611 classrooms within our UPK program. We have provided related services to other preschoolers that are in the non-integrated preschool classrooms. And we provide special education itinerant services for other students at home. If teachers, we have teachers willing to work us on the school day and they will go to home and provide that service. And we're also completing preschool evaluations currently. And one of the other differences between preschool and school age is that parents do have the ability to select who they want to evaluate their preschool child. So they can choose from any of the three private agencies, Beaventown, or Beaventown preschools. It's a little bit different. As far as what we're looking at for our data, we have students, the school age students with disabilities have remained somewhat constant other than that 14, 15 school year down from there. You can see the gray, that is our preschool population, and that is increasing. And that's not just in Beaventown, but countywide, they're seeing many more preschoolers with disabilities being classified.
That's a statewide issue too.
Yes. And addition to that is the lack of services to go with those increased needs. So even, like despite Beaventown adding four classrooms and other services, we still have students on waiting lists for services because there's that much in the, in the area for providers. Students at CDES, so we are looking at students placed outside of our district. So you can see that's decreased quite a bit over the years when Beaventown developed their, some of their own special education programs and brought students back to the district. And you can see there's been a little bit of an increase this year. And I did just make a note that it's not so much that we're sending more students to CDES, but we have received five transfer students in the past year with students already placed at CDES. And so sometimes we, if we have a comparable program, we're able to bring that student great to Beaventown. Sometimes it's not possible or that student may not be ready for a local district. So it's just based on an individual student and what program they're in and what their needs are. 504 plan, so as we mentioned, we've kind of changed our 504 plan process. When I started, the principals were doing 504 plans and we've kind of centralized that to the student services office to make it more consistent and follow that CSE process. And so we were also doing full evaluations for students with 504 plans. So for instance, often we get notes from medical professionals that need, want, request a 504 for a student. So that might have been a reason to give a 504 plan. And now, of course, we're doing our own evaluations, which are required. And so initially, I think we saw the increase, but as we've done reevaluations of these students, there's been a decrease there.
So this slide notes our kin-mento eligible students. I think we used to refer this population as homeless students. I think municipal guidance, they want us to use the term kin-mento eligible. So these are students, I'm sure you're somewhat familiar, these are students who, no fault of their own, and unpredictably, they have lost adequate or stable housing. They are entitled, there's some other thing, but free lunch. They're also entitled to continue to attend the Beaventown district even if they have to move outside of the district. The numbers have stayed somewhat steady over the last few years. So about that number, it's around like 44 right now. Six of those students we currently transport from out of the district. With this I give you a general perspective on it. Are there any questions about this slide or this process?
Nick, I don't think it was too long ago when in the 13, 14, or before, when that number was really low. So to see that number now and constantly hovering around 45, it's a cost driver, sometimes it's a revenue source for the district.
Do all of these students have PINS? Are they PINS per or it's not mutually exclusive?
No, it could be something as, I'll just give you an example of what qualifies. If a child lives in Beaventown and their home works down, and then the family moves with, involves, say grandparents in Platteville, and the law's designed to minimize educational disruption for those students. So they are entitled to continue with Beaventown. They are also entitled to choose Platteville. It's not wholly uncommon because of that, the ability to continue with Beaventown extends for up to 50 miles. But it's not uncommon for a family that they're allowed to make a decision if, because of travel, time, the time on the bus, et cetera, they may choose to switch schools. And once that, say that, that family, they say that they buy a new house in the Platteville district, that's a permanent house, they do still qualify to stay at Beaventown until June 30th, at which point they will then have to enroll in Platteville. Anything else? So this next slide, there is state aid reimbursement, enforcement, or kin-mento eligible. I don't believe prior to 1516 that we were billing the state through the stack system fully. That's what is the cause of the jump. I'm just looking at the stack system and the state aid numbers, it's always interesting to see exactly how they do it. A rough rule of thumb seems to be the state delivers roughly $5,500 for every kin-mento eligible student. If they have an IEP, regardless of services, that number is around $25,000. And I believe that they fully reimburse students who are kin-mento eligible and will attend This is our foster numbers. It's gone down. Sometimes your foster students, they are placed outside of your district and sometimes you get students from other districts who find foster care in your district. That's kind of two different colors to note. So this graph, it's not scaled better very well. We just happen to go from two to seven, so it looks like a big jump. Couple families we've been in and we're glad to have them, we do provide supplemental ELA instruction to them.
What else stands for?
I'm sorry, English language learners.
We've had Pakistani, like a family from Pakistan before, where's from, Morocco? Where's some of the families coming from?
Well, they were in the US, but Pakistan and Miami, but the children's main language. So one question we ask when students enroll, their primary language. And those students, they, most of their school career were in Spanish-only speaking schools. So they qualify. There's a state test, you do take the quality to see if you do well.
Are some of those students, they're literate in English? Like they're fluent in their native language, but they are starting ground zero in English?
Um, no. No, and actually sometimes when students enroll, the families don't check that box because they, they speak, their conversational English is fine. Sometimes it's not until they start to do some academic work or email teachers that we notice there's a deficit, and then they were allowed to administer the NICHTL. And that's a test that is allowed, which is to qualify for the ELA services. And it is something for us to consider prior to classifying a child with a disability. Because obviously a child who has English deficits, that should be taken into account before we say they maybe have already a disability in the motion. Again, this is another data point that we track. These are migrant eligible students. And the definition for a migrant student, if your family relocates for farming, dairy, or a fishing industry, the students are migrant eligible. And that, even if they, they no longer move, that, I guess denotation stays with them for up to three years. So this is our incarcerated youth numbers. And this, there was a drop, and I believe the drop is due to the crazy age law that New York State passed. It went fully into effect October 1st of 2019. At last October, they eliminated age 16, and then this year it was age 17. The intent is to simply not incarcerate students or people who are 16 and 17 years old, so that obviously leads to a drop. It's also indirectly, but intentionally so, has led to fewer arrests throughout the state. We, we don't anticipate that number going down much more next year, but we don't fully, you know, full ramifications of the law.
And Nick, those are the kids that were in our jail program from around the county or just our kids?
They, I believe they're placed in the county, they come hours.
Yeah, they can come anywhere, anywhere in your district. We just provide them.
We provide the education from around the county. They end up in the sheriff's department, incarceration.
And you're still entitled to educational services.
Just looking at some of the strengths of the district in special education, and that's the most recent number I have for that graduation rate. In 1773, the New York State target, you can see, so we were quite a bit above the New York State target. We also meet or exceed our targets for ELA math and ELA math in the high school consistently. The suspension rate, the separate schools, we have very few students from none of the district. And then we also have a high number of parents reporting that they were involved in the process and satisfied with their student services. So those are kind of some of the strengths that we've seen. But we also have goals that we are working on. One of the areas is our classification rate. So the state target is 14% or lower, which there really are not any districts in this area needing that right now. When you look at this graph, and I took this right from the state and website, it looks like a dramatic decrease, but it's really not. It's from 18, just over 18, to 16. It's from eighteen, it's over eighteen to sixteen percent. And I would say right now, we're about seventeen percent classification rate. But we are hoping with the ongoing RTI process improvements that we start seeing fewer students coming through and needing a special education service. We also look at continuing to decrease the dropout rate for students with disabilities. And this number fluctuates quite a bit because it only takes a few students to change it. Target is fourteen percent or lower. And this is challenging area, obviously, but I think there's, we're continually putting new programs in place, which is nice, that helps students. We have a lot of more hands-on programs that students, that are, our students are very successful in. We also, this aisle started the Frye Program this year, which has helped students with disabilities and without. Those are some of the ways that we're looking at decreasing that dropout rate. We also want to continue to increase the time in the least restrictive environment. So if you look at the orange on the graph, that is the students that are in the general education, spending eighty percent or more of their day. So we want to see that increase every year. And then at the bottom, that's students that are in the general education setting, less than forty percent of the day. So we want to see that get smaller. You can see, we have slowly been increasing that time in the least restrictive environment, but we're not quite meeting our target yet.
Well, one thing to just point out, students in a co-teaching classroom for important purposes, that's the general education setting.
So in some of the ways we are looking at doing that is we've provided some additional professional development on integrated co-teaching and looking at what supports and modifications, accommodations we can provide in that general education setting. Making sure we're doing that prior to changing a student to a more restrictive environment. We also, for instance, this year at the high school level, we had one less section of the fifteen-one English and additional consultant teacher English, and the students that are doing very well in that model, so.
Pauline, that was actually one of our goals over the last two years, was to move that number from forty-seven in the right direction, so.
Yes, it is, it is moving in the right direction, for sure. So essentially, this is the State Education Department, their blueprint for improved results. This is kind of just what guides our, what we look at in the department. And all the things we talked about as far as providing inclusive programs and practices and parent involvement and teaching students self-advisacy, all of those things that we're working towards.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I actually do have some. How does a preschooler with a disability transition into kindergarten?
That's a very good question. So when a student is transitioning to school age, we have a transition meeting. And we talk about eligibility at school age. So in order to do that, sometimes, many students are declassified at preschool. They may be scoring and made such improvements at that age that they are declassified. Other students we look at, are they going to be eligible at school age? Do they meet one of those thirteen classifications? So when you look at that, it's a little narrower at that level because you're not going to classify preschooler with a learning disability. They haven't received that, any of that instruction yet. So typically, there are students that are classified with autism, other health impairment, or speech and language impairment are the three, I would say, most common preschoolers transitioning to school age that may receive IEPs. Other students may only receive a five oh four plan as they transition and they only need speech or speech improvement services because their scores are such that they're doing really well. And then they get reevaluation. Kind of depends when their first available preschool was, but then they'll have their reevaluation and kind of get a lot more information at that point at school age level with different testing.
I think it's a really hard time for parents to have their babies transition into a public school system and they, their level of security in preschool versus kindergarten classroom.
Absolutely.
It just shakes them.
And one of the nice things about the integrated preschool rooms, I think, is those students have been able to be in Beakman Town, work with the same providers that are going to stay in. It helps parents become more comfortable with the school setting as well. The kids get comfortable, they get comfortable with the people. And it's also a transition. You can see, how are they doing in that integrated setting? They may be in an integrated kindergarten setting as opposed to a more restrictive environment.
Excellent, thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is with Vice President Ed Maron. He attended another roundtable, so he would like, he would like him to update us.
All right. No, okay. So I'll have to go back. All right, so I got a chance to go again to Albany to meet with the Chancellor, the Ritz Chancellor, and the Acting Commissioner, Shem Taham. And we went over a couple of subjects associated with, you know, what's going on in changes education in the state. And let's see, we did cover some school safety components. They talked about the ACE's scores and predictors for your behavior. Reports that highlighted staff, kind of highlighted staff and student connections was really the most critical component on safety in institutions like ours. You can spend a lot of money, but Dan was just talking about, you know, how much do you know, where we spent in the district, but what has the biggest impact? And so the connection between the staff here and the students has, does have the biggest impact on safety. And they talked also about creating safe, more safe school ambassadors, they promoted that. One of the biggest topics was diversity. And it kind of also enveloped the scarcity of teachers in general in the state. It's hard to find teachers, specialized fields. It's also a place where people, less people are going into the field in general. So they try to create new programs to draw, to draw people into the profession. There was some conversation about trying to find a way to improve the, how the country views education as a profession. Some of the lack of respect that we have now compared to before, those kind of elements. So there was conversation about trying to bring in more teachers, but making sure you don't change the standards in a way that then quality of the profession doesn't drop as well. So it's a, it's a big challenge that we have in the state. I talked about stealing teachers from other states and doing some sort of marketing something. You know, there are a lot of good people out there, let's bring them here. And, you know, at Beakman Town, I think we do. Interesting conversation did evolve around diversity component. And it was, it was interesting because with this teacher shortage that we have, people ask, well, should we be worried about diversity when we're already having a hard time getting teachers, right? That's one conversation. But then as that evolved, you know, people brought different perspectives. What's neat about that, there's only about twenty, twenty of us there, and we have people from all over the state, different flavors and looks and all that, it was kind of neat. And some places like ours, you know, it's not as big of a requirement because it's a relatively homogenous community, right? But we do have occasional people that are different. And so the conversation did talk about, you need that because your students will also travel to other colleges or other places and they need to know how to interact with them. And I felt kind of bad for one person, kind of brought up the thought about the interest in doing this. Is this more for optics? Is it, you know, just because we want to present this face that we're doing more for diversity? And so then, then some other people started talking. And I felt bad for this gentleman because he's male. And so then other people talked about, well, we don't have that many diverse people in our community, or some of them have a few, but nobody in the teaching position is of any other background, right? But what was interesting was, in some places, while you may be homogenous, you have environments where it has a tremendous amount of, let's say, male and female participation. But like just as superintendents, there aren't a lot of women that are superintendents. So for, so for those that were having the conversation, well, we don't really need to worry about diversity because it's predominantly a Caucasian environment. Well, suddenly, it depends on the ledger you're looking from. And the Chancellor had a really interesting perspective. She says, you know, some people, if you're not raised, is it being important to your fabric of your life? Then you don't see that. So then somebody will say, well, you're right, there aren't that many superintendents that are women. That's, that's a perfect example of what we may not see that's right in front of us. Not that we want to get rid of you, Dan, just saying.
We're smarter than that.
So it was interesting conversation of what, you know, not know, you don't know. But the biggest real part was not enough teachers and trying to get teachers. Then you'll be happy to hear about this, a big component of this is about IDAs and pilots. You know, our revenue is strongly impacted by both the state's grants and aid, and also by our taxpayers, right? And we have had many conversations here about pilots. And so, Dan, we'd be happy to hear this. Quite a few law efforts as part of the lobby, but also going into law, into trying to improve transparency, right? So the IDAs, industrial development agencies, are now required to stream their meetings, which wasn't required before. The application notification has to come to the school districts now. I don't know if we've received.
We received it.
It's not something used to happen. Now we're aware of that. Someone's coming in trying to either get a pilot or lieu of taxes. Some places are now requiring school board representatives on the IDAs.
We've asked for that.
Okay. And then also veto power and approval. So some of these things are in different stages in law. Some of them will become law, and so there's some progress there. The other one that was talked about was later school start times. The trend in the country in general seems to be moving towards swapping out high school, elementary, high school. A lot of districts have implemented, a lot of conversation about how it affects parents, the people, and sports, all this, right? The consensus is that at the end of the day, you have to do what's best for the education of students. We are an education system, not a sports system. And that the trend seems to be going in that direction. So we'll see what happens. There are some local schools in our area that have changed, and so there's, there's a lot of growth in that direction. So something for us to see coming down the line. Health insurance costs, we've talked about it, that was a big conversation. That's about it. Good time for teachers, administrators, there's a lot of changes going on in the state program. You have your, you have your mechanisms for providing your input. It's a good time to do it. They're listening. That's it.
All right, very much. Great, next, we're going to go back to number three on the agenda. We're into public comment. You set aside ten minutes for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment to the board, I'm asking that you approach the board at this time. But first, Mr. Maron is going to update us or fill us in on our public comment policy.
Okay, let's see. Please identify yourself and speaking. If you have any complaint, you're allowed to talk about anything related to school matter. If you have a complaint, please go through the established complaint procedure first, possibly if you can. And just maintain kind of civil approach of conduct, stick to facts. And President Buckley has responsibility to maintain order and, and she has the right to discontinue any kind of presentation that violates the policy. You cannot talk about or address specific people.
Also, if there are multiple people in our public comment, we'd appreciate it. Do you hold your comments to approximately two minutes? So if you would, someone would like to approach the board at this time, please do.
How do I approach the board?
You did.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jenna Barnaby. And I would like to read a letter to the Board of Education, the superintendent, the entire school community of the Beakman Town Central School District. Can everyone hear me? Excellent.
Are you the author of the word?
No.
Okay.
Would you like me to say who the author of the letter is?
That would be good.
The author of the letter is Parents' Choice for Children's Education, Free from Medical Mandates in the Beakman Town Central School District. I am here on behalf of all of the parents who uphold the right to an education for their children, free from medical mandates in the BCS district. The purpose of my time here this evening is twofold. One, to inform the BCS district of three active bills in the New York State Legislature that will negatively affect our entire community. Number two, to invite the BCS district to take action in two ways, based on the information that I will share. Number one, three bills may become law in January twenty twenty that we believe will negatively impact our community. The three are both Senate and Assembly bills. Number one, S two nine eight B, Assembly Bill A two nine one two A. A proposed law that would mandate the HPV shot for all children in order to attend any public, private, or parochial schools in grades five through twelve. There's a website as well that I have included on this letter. Bill two, Senate Bill two two seven six, Assembly Bill A two three one six. A proposed law that would mandate the annual flu shot for all children in order to attend any daycare, preschool, public, private, or parochial schools pre K through twelve. Also a website showing that bill. And the third bill, Senate Bill three eight nine nine, Assembly Bill nine seven three. A proposed law that would allow for both the treatment of sexually transmitted infections or the administration of the HPV shot to minors nine years old without parental knowledge or consent. Also listed the website. Number two, since the Beakman Town Central School District provides an education to our children, and ultimately to our parents, families, and community members, we encourage you to lead our district in the following two ways. The first way, educate the BCS district and community through the myriad of communicative modes at your disposal with information that directly impacts the school community, such as the three bills shared tonight that are proposed to become laws in order for our children to attend school at BCS. And the second, contact our government leaders who vote on our behalf and share your views about a child's right to an education that is free from medical mandates, as well as maintaining the rights of parents in raising their child or children. We hope that the Beakman Town Central School District will advocate, along with many of the other schools across New York State, regarding matters that directly impact our children's health and education, their parents and families, and ultimately, our communities. And we hope that our district will continue to remain supportive of those actions which preserve our children's right to an education without laws that dictate medical procedures in order to receive one. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Parents' Choice for Children's Education, Free from Medical Mandates in the Beakman Town Central School District. We've left an email, parentschoiceplattsburgh@gmail.com, as well as a cell phone number for any questions or concerns. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Robert Burnham. I live at three ninety-three Ducat Road here in Beakman Town. I'm here tonight for two requests. My first request is for the true graduation rate at Beakman Town Central School District. The leadership at Beakman Town has published on its homepage a graduation rate of ninety-three percent. Yet, checking with New York State Education Department, school report cards, the district doesn't have a ninety-three percent graduation rate. For two thousand thirteen, the graduation rate was eighty-six percent. For two thousand fourteen, the graduation rate was eighty-four percent. Two thousand fifteen, seventy-nine percent. Two thousand sixteen, eighty-four percent. Two thousand seventeen, ninety-one percent. That was close, but it's not ninety-three percent, is it? And then for two thousand eighteen, the graduation rate was eighty-four percent. This is all according to the New York State Education Department School Report Cards. I have copies here if anyone would like to look them over. Two thousand nineteen data has yet to be verified by the State Education Department and published. 2019 data has yet to be verified by the State Education Department and published, which they expect to have done sometime in January 2020. So it looks like it's a leadership decision here to deceive us, the public, by providing these false facts to the taxpayers, to the parents, to the students, and to the staff of Beakman Town Central School District. So I'm asking that this Board of Education publish the true graduation rate on your school webpage and stop exposing our children to this fake news. My second request is for our elected Board of Education to please plan accordingly when adopting the 2020-2021 school calendar. According to an email that I received from this district, which was dated November 1, 2019, explaining why the school calendar had to be changed at the last minute, the district stated, "The New York State Education Department recently changed how they allow schools to calculate both hours and days of instruction. To me are required 181 days at Beakman Town Central School District. We needed to amend the parent-teacher conference prior to Thanksgiving. Please plan accordingly." Perhaps the leadership at Beakman Town should plan accordingly.
Mr. Burnham, we had a discussion earlier about referring to employees in any way, so...
So I can't talk about leadership? I can't talk about Board of Education?
I'm asking you to not refer to a single person as an employee of the district.
I haven't referred to any single person, Kathy.
In any way.
I have not referred to any specific person.
What you're saying is fine. Just drop that term, and we're okay.
Are you restricting my freedom of speech?
I'm asking you not to refer to employees in any way.
Which I haven't done. Which I haven't done. Leadership? I cannot say the word leadership?
Not today.
Is that why there, is there not any leadership at the district?
Mr. Burnham, I would love for you to finish your public comment. Please do not refer to an employee in any single way. Thank you.
According to the New York State Education Department, which I found under attendance in the school calendar, Guidelines in Reporting for School Aid Purposes, it clearly states, "Half-days scheduled before scheduled vacation days for any grade levels, such as the days before Thanksgiving, do not count towards the 180 days." These changes in how to calculate both hours and days of instruction took place in April 2017, with the most recent update from New York State Education Department on January 16, 2019. This is a full two months before it was recommended to this Board of Education to adopt the 2019-2020 school calendar on March 26, 2019. So what were the recent changes that required amendments to the school calendar in November of 2019? Does the district not receive these updates from New York State Education Department? If not, I have a copy that I'd be happy to share with you. So why are students, parents, taxpayers, and all stakeholders at Beakman Town being fed false information by this district? Is it a decision of this district to continually provide us alternate facts about the state of affairs within this district? How am I or any Beakman Town Central School District stakeholder supposed to believe anything that comes out of this district when simple facts such as graduation rates or our annual district calendar are being misrepresented to us? Our district deserves better than what is currently being provided by this board. Perhaps it's time for a change, and time to bring in some new leadership. Leadership that's going to provide the truth. Now, I don't expect any response from this Board of Education. I know your belief is that by simply ignoring the facts, you hope the issues will go away. Please know, I'm not going to go away. Okay? And I will continue to fight for issues that impact my children's education. Again, it's probably time for new leadership within this district.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Burnham? Real quick. Just to be clear, the, the concern about the calendar, did the calendar change, or did that affect you in any way?
Sure it did.
So if there's a concern about how it was implemented, that'd be good for us to know? Or is your concern about the information about the calendar? Which is, which is the part that's...
My concern is I'm being fed false information. You're creating a calendar and then you're amending it. If I could go on and continue with what I wanted to say, yeah, I'm being restricted by my freedom of speech. I can't explain myself with this.
Let me, let me, I'm trying to, trying to help you here, okay? I want to, if there's a concern about the calendar, that's good information to know about the concern. To have an opinion about how the information comes to you about the calendar, that's a separate issue, right? And you, you're allowed that opinion. But that's, that's an opinion. My question to you is, is as a concern, how is the calendar affecting you when it was changed?
When you make last-minute changes like that, it doesn't just impact me. It impacts all the parents. We have to make arrangements. We have to make, find daycare, and all kinds of things that happen during the day.
That's, so that, that's a good statement. I'm a parent as well.
Yeah.
It affected me as well.
Yeah. It impacts our daycare. We have to find daycare at the last second.
That's a valuable concern to place forward.
But more importantly, it's false information as well.
Thank you for your comments. Moving forward on to reports. Our first report is Superintendent of Schools, Daniel Lanix.
Yeah. Probably need to change the website. Probably some data on there that hasn't been updated. Do a better job updating that on our graduation rates. The, give the Business Office and the Principals a lot of credit. They had to go through a new system that the state implemented for us to calculate our time. Jen, you remember that?
I remember.
Right. We had to submit that this year for the first time, right? Right. This is a false, this is accurate. And in the spreadsheet, there were days that they had led us to believe that would count as, as a day of education. Yet, when plugged into the spreadsheet, which we had to submit to the state, they didn't count as a day of education. So those math shapeings we had set over there, they, some administrators had to make changes to the calendars to make sure that we have 180 days, because our contracts fall for 181 days of education here. So previously, we couldn't have, that was an old rig, which you heard today, which wasn't enforced by the state. And you can go through, and go, we could spend hours on this conversation. But in our calendar, we had to make changes because of a new spreadsheet that had to be plugged in. So that was recent to this year.
I just had to have it submitted by November 10. And then we got it back for corrections.
So it was a long, another unfunded mandate change that actually has changed a couple of times over the last few years. We continue to stay on top of it. Changes do happen in education. We'll try to do our best to communicate them to everybody. Sorry if that causes great anger.
A quick question. Do you, we may have had this conversation years ago, and I asked you before. Here before you got here. So there's the half-days versus the full-day. And I know that when holidays come around, some of the professional development days, they do have an impact on those parents as far as kids, and when they get off, and all that stuff. So could you refresh us as to how the decision-making process is for some of that?
Sure. So why don't I do this? Because I don't want to be accused of talking off the cuff and getting out false information. Why don't I go back and, and refresh how we've done in the past? Joe does a tremendous job. We work with the admin team in our meetings. We submit it to the board. We have discussions here at the board table. We'll look for interest of clarity and precision. I think I probably should, you know, make sure that we get it right.
Okay.
It's a good question, Ed.
Yeah. We visit it next meeting and get some understanding.
Another, we got a letter from Exelis. I think there was a clarifying email that went out today on behalf of the Beakman Town Central School District. But Exelis sent out a letter to everybody within the consortium, I think. I think, that's what happened. We did our best to try to rectify the letter. They, they use a pretty difficult language for people. It was alarming language for people. So I think our staff, Jen, and her people did a good job trying to remedy that, that response. So you may hear something from retirees or others about that letter. We had Will Sweeney here today, and I don't know if this is, in Grants Update. Will Sweeney is the author of our social-emotional learning curriculum. It was great to have her here to reinforce with our students and teachers the, what they're being taught in the classroom from our counselors, teachers, and whoever else. Our, before I even, I have one other quick thing I'm going to go through on our budget. But our goals, we had a question come about our goal one, specifically the interventions and goal, well...
Yeah. Nick addressed it, and he was probably taking some of that.
Okay. I appreciate the answer, and this would be a great place to make sure everybody understands that, so. And then, hey, some of the budget numbers, again, they might not be precise. They asked for round numbers to just give us a ballpark on how we... And then, you know, obviously, as people retire and people come and go, and programs change, there's special ed changes. Right now, our best guess for numbers, we're looking at an increase in over $600,000 in salaries across the district next year, $250,000 in TRS, that's the Teacher Retirement System, $120-plus thousand in the ERS system. And if health insurance goes up, I said, and if health insurance goes up 12%, we don't know that number. I'm giving you my estimate, not anybody else's estimate. The rough number there would be a million two-plus dollars. So for the grand total of just rolling over everything as is, I'm sure there's some other costs, like we didn't talk about OCS or anything like that. We're looking at trying to, through our tax cap number and through the state, trying to garner another $2.2-plus million, just to, just to roll everything over. And our tax cap numbers probably...
Yeah. I don't have enough numbers right now to plug in yet. I'm working on getting the pilots and all of that stuff.
Yeah. The base, we build off that. And, and most of the board members remember how that fluctuates tremendously. Was it, was it 1.5 or 1.7? Was it 1.54 or 1.7?
1.7.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So I don't have enough numbers to give you an estimate yet. I, we have our growth factor in, and that's about it. I've requested all the information for pilots, and we're working with fiscal advisors for all of the bonds and all of that good stuff. So in January, I'll have a good, good estimate for you.
And everybody, everybody remembers when Eric Bell was here, how that, you know, we'd come in and it could change as we got different numbers. And so I just wanted to give the board an update on the budget. That's a, that's a tough, that's a tough, tough number, $2.2-plus million dollars, just to roll things over. That's what I have for my presentation tonight.
All right. Our next report is through Business Board of Education. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
You guys will be hearing a lot from me the next few months with budgets, so I'll wait until then.
Okay. Next is ex-officio student board member, Grant Decker.
So we will start with the elementary schools, then go to the middle school, and then the high school. So starting with Cumberland Head. Students are excited for the holiday season. Students in the second grade are learning about the holidays around the world, and they're preparing to sing "Presidents" at a local nursing home. I remember doing that. Students in grades one and three are preparing a joint holiday play for the school. That's Pol Express, if I remember correctly. They've been busy learning their lines and songs to present, yep, Pol Express to their school. Singing "Santa" will return for a school-wide assembly on December 20. Students are involved in 12 days of giving, so each day, students are asked to donate a food item. The grade level that collects the most food will win a pizza party, and the donations will be going to a local food pantry. And also, Plattsburgh State students who remain on campus for the breaks. Eagle Pride Committee is leading this building initiative with 800 items having been donated so far. The annual CHES spelling bee was held. Fourth grade winner was Eliana Fulham, and the fifth grade winner was Raylan Provost. And they will go to the Regional Bee in March, that will be held at Plattsburgh High. Willow Sweeney from Top 20 Training is scheduled to return to the school district. Will, will be working with students in grades three through five as a complement to the Top 20 curriculum that counselors and students are implementing this school year. And staff are happy about her return, as she's a dynamic speaker. So it's been a very busy month in, short, a busy month in the CHES. Moving on to Beakman Town Elementary. For November, there was the Veterans Coin Drive. There was the Buddy Project, where older students teamed up with younger students to make cards for veterans. There was a field trip, North Pole Lanes, the Positivity Project Assembly, and the Mega Concert. And then in December, so this is what's happened so far and what will happen, the Puppet People, a Christmas Carol presentation, a holiday parade in downtown Plattsburgh. Willow Sweeney will come again for grades three through five. There will be a Christmas concert, Frosty Shop, which will be a student shop for the families for $1. A Holiday Buddy Activity, which will be decorating Christmas ornaments. First grade field trip to Uno/Deuce Day for ice skating. There will be reading with Santa. There will be singing Santa, again. There will be Festiv Fridays, where students and staff will dress up for holiday themed Fridays. Moving on to the middle school, there was a great turnout for Team Summit Showcase. City Shaper. Students had the task to identify a problem in the community and help with the solution. Student groups presented ideas on the renovation of the Craig Center and some other ideas, with the establishment of rehab facilities for teams and solar windows. Team Ascents Showcase will be this Friday morning from 8:30 to 9:30. Students will be presenting their solutions to their assigned country's water issues. Our, the middle school band and chorus students have been rehearsing in preparation for the winter concert on December 16. The lumber for the raised garden beds in the courtyard was delivered, and classroom spelling bees are underway. The grade-level spelling bee is scheduled for January 7. Manda Zulo from ISU will be here tomorrow. So not tomorrow anymore, but, so she was here for the second time this year to guide content teams in the development of action plans informed by data from the state assessments. Reading Plus representatives will be here on, well, we're here on Friday to facilitate PD-focused implementing of blended learning approach using the program. The middle school also has established a climate team to develop a plan for strengthening the school climate. This team consists of representatives from each grade level and administration, and students will also be providing input to the team. And then, now for the high school. The high school's focus on college exposure has continued in the months of November and December. Students have stuff put on campuses to learn about the college experience through tours, info sessions, excluded dorms, and dining and lecture halls. They blend to Hudson Valley Community College and the University at Albany. The continued high school initiative to provide added support around college awareness hosted 25 families at the financial aid night, where parents and their children had the opportunity to complete their FASB application, as well as receiving information on the college admissions process and the parent's role within this process. Representative from Plattsburgh State was present to answer any questions that the parents might have had. 25 underclassmen participated in the pre-ACT last week. The exam provides students exposure to the ACT prior to taking it, whatever current really counts. This will help them to improve when they do take it. Results for the PSAT taken by 40 underclassmen in October demonstrated Beakman Town High School sophomores scoring 80 points higher than the state average. So go sophomores. Champlain Valley Family Services was on campus and spoke to the health classes on the dangers of drug use. The FFA students attended an environmental leadership field trip, and our MALE U.N. students attended St. Lawrence MALE U.N. for a leadership convention. The Mega Concert took place on November 14. So the entire district came together, performed, and they sounded really great. The high school winter concert will be tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. The first quarter report cards demonstrated students, teachers, and staff's hard work with 140 students obtaining honor roll, which is 85 or higher. 151 students received high honor roll, which is 90 or above, and 81 students achieved high honor roll with distinction, which is 95 and above.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next section is committee reports. I'm going to start with audit committee. I have two reports today. I'm going to start with our October 21 meeting. We accepted the September 2019 financial reports. Treasurer Stahl was kind enough to give us an overview of two financial reports and gave us updates on our food service program. For the month of September, we did have an increase of 3% over last September as far as our meals served overall. So that was, that was good news. We discussed, I lost my spot here. We discussed the differences in revenues and expenditures from the previous year. We also discussed the, some of the timing issues along that were associated with our ELT grant approval, the timing of tax deposits, accrual of cafeteria health... Some of the questions that were discussed were future expenses related to our cybersecurity as a result of our security audit, Medicare reimbursement checks and their different amounts, consolidation of our UPK grants, and changes to salary expenses being paid from those grants. The next was our November 21st meeting. We adopted, we accepted the October 2019 financial reports. Again, we spoke about the financial report, tax collection, an update on our food service programs. Through the month of October, we did not necessarily have an increase, but we did maintain our percentage as far as our breakfast, breakfast and, or our food service program. Some of the discussion that we had concerned extracurricular clubs, our crisis counselor in the elementary building. We talked about financial reports throughout the financial overview, including budget adjustments, negative balances due to building leveling movements of staff salaries, which is part of ESA. We discussed splitting legal expenses to identify specific services that were provided. We also discussed tracking athletic admissions revenue and how that revenue will offset the cost of maintaining our new athletic fields, or athletic complex. And our next audit committee meeting will be January 23rd.
Can I just, for the record, add one thing to that?
Oh, you're welcome.
We did discuss in one of those, in one of those meetings, the New York State Farmer's School program, and we were very happy with our Farmer's School program. We thought we were going to hit the 30% reimbursement level. We had an audit, and there was something happened, I think it was mostly with apples. And, and when the program was broadcast to us, we, we and others, when it was broadcast, had included breakfast and lunch, just lunch as I understand it now. So we missed it by 5%. So it's a miss, but it's still great to know 25%, I believe it's 25% of our food that's being served is from Farmer's School, and we've reached out to, already to one of the regional experts on Farmer's School to have that person come, and Roxy already has good ideas, but have come and had, get us over that threshold. So I don't want to, people to think we, we thought we crossed the threshold, but on, when we had to review, we're close, but we didn't, we didn't pass it. Okay, so it's good, just not great.
Excellent. Thank you. Our next committee is Operations Committee.
Okay, we met, Operations met November 20th. We had a good meeting, as usually, discussed energy performance contract, the capital project, and capital outlay for the last couple years. So first of all, the energy performance contract is finally coming to a close. You know, you've heard me talk about this for a number of years now, and, you know, Siemens had a lot of changes in their management, and we had troubles getting that to a close, but I appreciate Mr. Mannix staying on top of that task and, and keeping their toes to the fire. And finally, at that meeting, I guess, Mr. Mannix reported that he, of course, we have oversight with our techs, Tetra Tech and Rick Mandel finally went through that, that whole process and was willing to have us sign off on the completion of that project. And just to review, a lot of you've heard this, but it's a, it was basically a $7 million project that gave us, you know, so many materials and system upgrades that greatly improved our district's energy performances, you know, these lights, solar, huge ones, air and water balancing. And Mr., and despite the delay of closing, Mr. Noonan, Mr. Nolan of our Buildings and Grounds Department was always very happy with the quality of work that was done, and that made me feel a lot better as part of that committee, is, you know, there were some things that were, we were having trouble closing, but nonetheless, there was never any, you know, corners taken, and, and finally, that is coming to a close. But other, other things, you know, that were involved in that project, besides some of the things I already mentioned, but the things we see, like in middle school, the double doors, and in the district office, the double doors, and all that has to do with, you know, air balancing, and Mr. Noonan was happy to report that he went through a large part of the building, it was all the same temperature, because in years past, I don't know, I work in the building, but many of the teachers would complain, my room is cold, my room's too hot, and those problems seem to be sorting themselves out. I asked this parliament, you know, not only is this a $7 million project, but the, there's guaranteed savings to us, so it's a win-win, and I asked her if, you know, are we seeing that back yet? It was just, it's too soon to have any of that data back, because it's just come completion, so we need to look at the, you know, next six months, next year, to, to see if they're, if we're receiving the benefits that they, they claim in the contract. But nonetheless, happy to have that come to a close. The capital project, as we've all seen, you know, there's been three phases, right? The first phase, and the, I'm not going to go through all the details, but I'd like to talk to them mostly about what is left, but going back in history, you know, the first phase, when not everything came to bid, but we got the, the parking lots and the safety aspects of the parking lots improved, and lots of other things, the bus garage, and the tanks, and boilers, and natural gas coming ahead, and, but anyway, the latest phase three of the project, to update everyone. The Beaventown Elementary entrance is just about done, right? There was a carpet issue.
Some door swipe issues, some electricity going there, and carpet is basically right there.
Yeah. I didn't mean to know, is it being used or not?
No, I mean, no. It's not open yet.
Okay.
Closed.
Closed. The cafeteria, then we know about Beaventown Elementary School, gym cafeteria, there's no more, you know, the students, I'd love to go over there and take a look at it, I haven't done that yet, but, you know, that was part of the, the end of the summer coming through school year, glad to get that done. The, of course, the turf field, and I asked Mr. Noonan about maintenance, I was curious, because I can imagine a beautiful field like that needs to be maintained, and the turf company has recommended certain maintenance, brushes and things that they run over the turf with to keep it fresh and, and the way it should be performing, and they have a maintenance schedule, and, and so he seemed to be right on that and could report about specific things they needed to do to maintain, maintain the field, and there's guidance, of course, from the turf company to put it in there. There's also something about a magnet that sucks up any little metal pieces, and so I was pretty impressed that they seem to have a good plan in place to keep that going. Thought the track will be lined in the spring, obviously, when the weather gets, gets nice again. And we still have some things to do with baseball and football fields, but finally, at the end completion, this project will have most of our teams back here on campus, and that was our goal. And there were some things in, back, you know, a couple of years ago now, that we had designed, you know, for future capital projects, you know, what other things, and that, some of that had to do with the fields as well. The staging area behind the turf field is, you know, it's still a staging area, it's a mess over there, but they're going to level that, seed it, and it's going to be another green space that our kids can play sports on, and Mr. Mannix told me that. There's, there's, we're going to maintain a little parking area for visiting teams coming to that side of the stands and that side of the field for the sports that are played there. I thought that was a good idea as well. Another really comforting thing that I heard about, which you guys wouldn't hear about unless you attend our meetings, way back when, I was really surprised at something that was built into this capital project that was called contingencies. And we looked at it, and it varies, because some things they can estimate to a great deal of specificity. They know how much things are going to cost, and there's not a lot of changes, but there's some things, like President Trump not allowing us to import steel or tariffs, you know, and that greatly changed things, and so there was contingency built to the project. Some are really quite high, you know, 20%, and some were quite low, so it's hard to speak what the actual contingencies were, but each specific part of the project had contingencies built into them, and I was, like I said, way back when, I was surprised at how much those contingencies were, for, like I said, unexpected changes, delays, things they find, you know, asbestos underneath the Beaventown Elementary entrance, things like that, big boulder somewhere in the, or a different field. But Mr. Hamlin reported that we're well within our contingency right now, project's not quite done, but we're well within our contingency. And I had noted that when I first started on the board, our last capital project was coming to a close, and we had a nice leftover piece of the contingency, and we discussed about how we're going to use that money, and, and that's how we rewired the whole building for wifi, and so that's something, we don't know how much of the contingency is going to be left, but we're just glad to know that we're not going to be scrambling for, you know, thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars to finish the project. Any questions about the capital project? Capital Outlay, just to refresh everybody, it's a $100,000 project that the state eats us 85% of, and we try to use that for...
Eighty.
Oh, eighty?
Eighty.
For things that are really, you know, urgently needed, that we discover a problem. Remember years ago was the bus lifts, and a couple of years ago was the back windows of Beaventown, or Cumberland Head. Currently, if you see though, some of the windows being replaced in the front of Cumberland Head, that's actually not capital outlet, that's part of the cap project. But anyway, the back windows were a couple of years ago. Now, this year is a lot of the doors at Cumberland Head are going, classroom doors are going to be replaced. They're outdated with our new air and water balancing systems. Some of them have movers, and I guess we don't need that, and a lot of it has to do with safety, safety improvements.
Safety, yep. That's the number one goal, those doors, the safety improvements.
And then, so that's this year, this parliament was explaining that, you know, there was a lot to go into what style of door, how many doors can we afford within that, and there was, you know, some research and learning to go into that, and so this, those doors are coming, and that project will, will start, but the main work of it's already been done really. And then next year, this, this coming academic year, we'll, we're going to do the same kind of style of project with Beaventown Elementary.
Yeah, that's, yeah, this year, the one we're in right now. Those doors that are, were bid, were in last year's cap, right, capital outlet, and so you're, you're spot on. And then this year, we need to bid, and once we secure the bid, and we think it's, you know, obviously, the same company might bid on it, it's the same type of work. Those doors will also go into BES, so all that work will actually be happening, I would think, within the next six months, right?
Yeah, we're hoping if we break, we can do both last year's, which has already been approved and bid. We're hoping to do BES before April break as well.
Before the end of this academic year.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I got a little fuzzy on those details. Okay. But, and lastly, looking ahead, you know, we can think about what our capital outlet project will be following the Beaventown Elementary classroom doors might be. Mr. Mannix has an interest in improving our reachers at the middle town, or the middle school gym. He says they're outdated, there's some safety concerns, and that's something we will consider next year.
That, and we have been looking at another set of doors. Yeah, it's hard with the codes, we looked at the codes, we had architect there, but another set of safety doors in that hallway where you kind of have high school, middle school gym, and elementary school, so there's a lot of different versions right there, so...
Right at the entries?
Well, just past the entrance, so it's just, it's an odd spot, so it's, it's difficult with the regs, but we're working on it. It might, that's something we got to look at. We haven't looked at.
Let me go back for a second. I think I skipped the ODI, which obviously is one of the main pillars of our project in education spaces improvements, and obviously, we can see all the construction going on still there, but, and you get, you get the updates, you know, but, as, most everybody here gets the updates, but it's on our website, under capital project. Mr. A. Paul Skept is a really nice job at presenting pictures, and there were problems with some of the foundation and anchors, and there was delays, and who's going to fix that, and then there was a question about a certain wall, and it was done not exactly per, the architect's design, but under, but it did meet any kind of requirement, and so there was a little delay there, but finally, there's a, a strong push, as long as there's daylight, there's contractors in there shuffling around, working around each other, getting that project done, and it's estimated to be done, it was, at our meeting, it was estimated to be done December 31st, but I think that's pushing into beginning January.
January 7th right now, we can talk about whether we want to try to have our board meeting there, so that way we can put more pressure on them to get it done.
Yeah, that'd be really, really nice.
It's going to be a nice space.
Yeah, it's going to be beautiful, and certainly something our students will take advantage of, and our staff for professional development and for the community.
Yeah, family meetings.
Yeah, it'll be a great space.
Do you want to have any questions? All right, excellent. Moving on. Negotiations.
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 Yeah.
So, oh, sorry.
Yep, no problem. So since last board meeting, we've been at three times, November 1st, December 2nd, December 9th, so support staff, our, our bus drivers, our Buildings and Grounds aides, cafeteria workers, and we have an anticipated meeting in the beginning of January with our formal negotiators, and we're making progress.
Perfect.
Now moving on. May be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. You have a motion, please.
Motion.
Crystal.
Second.
Mike. Any questions or discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CPSE, CSE, and 504 recommendations dated 12/10/19. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Nicole. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends, recommends the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, and retirements be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mike?
Second.
Pauline? Any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the district-wide school safety plan be and are, and hereby adopted. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. Second?
Second.
Pauline? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, transfers, grant acceptance, and substitute administrator rate be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Crystal. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call, though. Douglas Beatty?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn?
Yes.
Ed Marin?
Yes.
Christopher Michau?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Poopord?
Yes.
Mark San?
Yes.
Pauline Stone?
Yes.
Mark San?
Yes.
Pauline Stone?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next, I have additional orders to discuss. Next, we have 10 minutes set aside for public comment.
Can I just, Joanne, just, I did see this, maybe it was yesterday. This is in the portal. There's a School Boards Association meeting, January 9th. A mental health education is in the school put out by Champlain Valley Educational Services. We can take a look at it. We would probably need to know by around the first of the year.
Yep, before, it's the 20th of December. Is it going up or is it down?
Sorry.
It's going to go up or it's down?
Sorry. 20th of December, so it's in the portal.
All right. Next, we've set aside 10 minutes for public comment. If you would like to make a comment to the Board of Education, I am asking that you approach the board and identify yourself. And is there anyone else that would like to approach the board at this time? All right. Moving on. We are having an executive session, so we're going to appoint a clerk pro tem. May be resolved that the Board of Education appoint Ed Marin as the clerk pro tem for this meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Mark, then Mike. Any questions or discussion?
We do have to invite Rick Gangware into the meeting.
All right. Rick Gangware will also be invited into our executive session. All right. No questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. We need to review our, we need to review the session.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I know, we need to rewire it, so it has everything in it. May be resolved that the Board of Education is going to take an executive session to discuss the whole history of a particular person or persons.
And then, yeah, I was going to, you know, mean to talk one negotiations down, but that was fine, it's Crystal's side.
Okay.
And then, something that...
We haven't covered, I mean, Rick.
One second. Matters that would imperil public safety that disclosed.
Motion is amended?
Hold on, there's no more?
Yeah.
Okay. And to discuss a pending matter.
Motion is amended.
May I have a second on that motion as amended? Thank you, Mark. All right, do we have any questions or discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. All right, we'll take a five-minute break and then we will go into our meeting.
We're not anticipating any action after this.
And we're not anticipating any action after this.